Good morning. Today is the fourth day of February, the time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Bailey and myself are present, Commissioner Davidson is absent. If we could have you identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Good morning, Herb Cantu, Lenfield. Alex Murray, operations.
Josh Bryan, operations.
Cody Smith, operations.
Joe DeRocher, Aida County Sheriff's Office.
Paul Carney, operations.
You have Blake, paramedic.
Iya Tuitt, procurement intern.
Robin Swainey, procurement.
Bob Perkins, Aida County procurement.
Michael Owens, development services.
Heather McCarthy, prosecutor's office.
Carl Linsch, K M Engineering.
Heather Luther, reporter's office.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
And our substitute ITU agent.
Katie, you're in clerk's office.
Richard Beck, development services.
Beth Maun, treasurer.
Okay, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Beck, there's a total of four changes.
Okay. Well, I'll accept a motion to make the changes. Is that for today's open business meeting or for the daily?
We have one on the OBM and three on the daily.
Okay, let's do that then. I'll accept a motion.
So I move to remove. I'd, the ten thirty item stated, uh, tour, discussion, and the one thirty misdemeanor probation staff meeting, and the two fifteen salvation army opening. Remove those from the agenda. And add the volunteer board that is added to the agenda.
To the open business.
To the open business meeting.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so the first item we have on the, on the agenda is the ratification of Valley County's appointment of Commissioner Caitlin Caldwell to the Central District Board of Health, filling the remainder of term, ending six thirty twenty-five, and a new term running seven one twenty-five to six thirty, six thirty. I might add that the legislature changed that law because this is a commissioner replacing a commissioner, and it used to be that the other commissioner didn't vote. Well, now they, they want us to all vote on them because this is a commissioner. Okay?
So I move to approve the, uh, adding to the volunteer board appointment. Ratify the volunteer board appointment as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll take the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we're move, uh, we have two unfinished business items. I'll, uh, three actually. I will, I guess it's three, yeah, three. I will accept a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item up is Development Services, application two zero two four zero two two eight six CU MSPV, Kim Engineering LLP. Uh, this revised findings of fact and conclusions of law. You want to give us a little brief update?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bailey. We have two, two revised findings to present to you today, both coming from the January fifteenth public hearing. This first one, if you recall, is related to, uh, a request for a conditional use of master site plan with a variance for a car wash out just north of the Walgreens in southwest Boise near Lake Hazel and Five Mile. And, uh, in this case, uh, after considering the evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing, you voted to approve this request. You added some conditions of approval. Um, you, you'll find on page sixteen in the revised findings, the fact that Michaela Owens prepared for this, the conditions that you added at the public hearing. Just as, as a, a reminder that you, uh, you added a condition for sound wall landscaping, approaching Walgreens about process seizesments, uh, hours of operation. Uh, I think there was even suggestion from the applicant that they could muffle the vacuum cleaners, um, and lighting conditions. So Michaela has added those along with the standard conditions that come from public agencies. Um, just pleased to present those for your consideration.
Michaela's usually very thorough.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate what, uh, what Richard just said, the staff just said. These were issues that were, uh, brought up at the meeting.
Hmm.
Uh, we did talk about them, and then we put conditions on noise, uh, sound wall, uh, additional landscaping, and the, the water was one of the questions as well. I think Richard didn't say that, but the water filtration system is a new system which is, uh, redoes the, the water. That was one of the concerns. The kind of soaps they use was also one of the concerns, and they addressed that. Traffic was addressed, hours of operation was addressed. So I think, and that's what this is doing today, is just redoing the findings of fact and conclusions of law based on the decision we made, uh, on January fifth, so. Uh, with that, I would-
I'll accept the motion.
Offer a motion to approve, uh, the revised findings and fact and conclusions of law for application two zero two four zero two two eight six dash CU dash MSP dash B. K M Engineering LLP.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Um, we did give this a thorough, uh, thorough review, and I think we landed on a pretty good spot. So all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have application two zero two three, uh, zero one zero six zero, Z C D A S V A C P R. Feather Creek Ridge, Ridge subdivision. Want to go ahead and give us a little report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this like the, the last one, uh, if you recall, this was a, a subdivision, a four lot subdivision in southwest Acuna, near, uh, south of King. I'm trying to think of the location, McDermott and Green Lane. Um, so it's on the north side of, of previous one that you had approved. And in this case, uh, our planning zoning commission was recommending denial, staff was recommending approval. You did listen to some testimony out there from some of the surrounding property owners, dairy owner out there. And after hearing that evidence and that testimony, you've again voted to approve. Staff has prepared, prepared revised findings for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I would just reiterate what staff said. We made some decisions, uh, which required revised findings of fact based on the testimony you heard, and, uh, the application is reviewed, and I've reviewed those, and, uh, staff has made those changes as we, uh, decision was made, and so I'll be ready to move forward.
I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for the Feather Creek Ridge subdivision, application two zero two three zero one zero six zero dash Z C dash D A dash S dash V A C dash P R.
I'll second the motion. I think we landed on a good, on a good spot there. As I recall, the, our planning zoning commission was a little short staffed. They, I mean, they didn't have the whole, full group there, and they, and, uh, they were an even split two-two. And so we landed on a good spot, and I, I'll, I'm, I'm happy to support this. Okay, you've heard the motion? Did I second the motion?
You did.
Yeah, I did, okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Will, you got treated good as a former staffer. Well, thank you. How you going? All right. Okay. Uh, next up, we'll have, uh, award of bid number two five zero one five, Aida County Sheriff's Office Health Services Unit.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Uh, under unfinished business this morning, um, we currently have two items, first of which is award of bid two five zero one five, Aida County Sheriff's Office Health Services Unit roof replacement. And, uh, we, uh, received five bids for this project, and we would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
If you can read the letter.
I'd be happy to. Uh, it's a letter dated February fourth, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Aida County Commissioners from Aida County Procurement regarding bid two five zero one five. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero one five to Cano Roofing Incorporated, doing business as Signature Roofing, as the lowest responsive bidder in a bid amount of three hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars.
Okay. Any questions? Not, I'll accept the motion.
Chairman, I move that we, uh, award bid two five zero one five to Canis Roofing Incorporated.
Cano Roofing?
Cano Roofing Incorporated for three hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Carries, thank you. All right, thanks. Go ahead.
Our second item under unfinished business is the award of bid two five zero two four, the Aida County Landville Horizontal Gas Piping Materials, two thousand twenty-five. And, uh, we received seven bids for this project, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
If you can read the letter.
Yeah, be happy to read it. It's a letter dated February fourth, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Aida County Commissioners from Aida County Procurement regarding bid two five zero two four. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order for bid two five zero two four to the following bidders and bid amounts. Uh, the first bidder is Ferguson Enterprise LLC, doing business as Ferguson Water Works for the Geo Textile Division. Their bid was nineteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. Uh, our second bidder awarded is ISCO Industries for the HDPE Pipe Division for the bid amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and twenty cents. And, uh, our third bidder is Docall Resources, and, uh, they were awarded the HDPE Thermal Butt Fusion Fittings Division, uh, for a bid amount of one thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And, uh, they were also awarded the HDPE Electrofusion Fittings Division in the bid amount of two hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Did you get all that?
No, but I- but he will help.
Okay, any questions or discussions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we award bid, so it's, it's one bid for all, all four of those?
Uh, yes, it's a, it's a, um, there was four divisions and three bidders.
So, uh, award bid number two five zero two four. To, do you want it Ferguson Enterprises or Ferguson Water?
I think we can maybe just, uh, make the recommendation for what was mentioned on the letter itself.
Okay.
And to, to simplify things a little bit.
So Ferguson, uh, Enterprises?
Um, yes, uh, so Ferguson Enterprises for Geo Textile Division for nineteen thousand nine-
Nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eighty-nine?
Uh, nineteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Nine eighty-one, twenty-nine?
Uh, twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Okay, I wrote it down now. My dislikes here. Uh, and to ISCO Industries?
Yes.
For, for what was?
The HDPE Pipe Division.
The HD Pipe Division for ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and twenty cents?
That's correct, yeah.
And Doc, Docall?
Docall Resources?
Resources.
And they had two divisions. The first was the Thermal Butt Fusion, uh, Fittings Division for one thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Thermal Butt Divisions?
Uh, yes, yeah.
For one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents?
Uh, one thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
One thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And the HD, what was that again?
HDPE Electrofusion Fittings Division.
Electro, uh, HDPE Electrofuse Divisions, uh, for two hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I almost got it right.
Hits a lot there.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? You got it all correct? You got it figured out?
I think so.
All right, good enough. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, we have a couple of resolutions, uh, so I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three oh six three, resolution establishing a fees cancel for the use of the public hearing room in the Aida County Courthouse and Administration Building. Uh, we wanted to make sure that if those were used by non-government, uh, non-county, uh, facilities, that, that it didn't cost taxpayers any money. And so, uh, and we, uh, changed from having the sheriff deputies be the guards to having, uh, the, um, marshals be the guards, and they don't, and they don't get paid quite as much. And so we'll be able to lower the fees a little bit. So, is there any, any discussion?
Well, just to reiterate what you said. One, one, we want to make sure these facilities are available to the public, but by the same token, have the users pay so the taxpayers don't pay for private entities using it. So that's what we're doing here.
Well, and we're just lowering the fees a li- a li- a little bit, which is fine. Okay, any, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on, uh, resolution three oh six three and call for a motion.
I move we approve resolution three oh six three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'll open the public hearing on resolution three oh six four, a resolution authorizing additional expenditures of emergency communication funds for the approval, for the approved Lucky Peak Radio Site Upgrade Project. Any questions or discussion on this? Um, hearing none, I'll accept the motion. Oh, I'll close the public hearing on resolution three oh six four.
Well, this is, this, this is nine-one-one upgrade, which is pretty important, just as a reiteration to the public that this, this makes, makes us our nine-one-one process, uh, so it's upgrading, uh, that and addition to the contract. So I would approve, move to approve resolution number three zero six four as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, uh, now we have procurement. Got a couple of bids we're gonna open up.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bailey. Uh, we, uh, under, uh, our, uh, our new business, uh, we have, uh, two items, the opening of RFP two five zero one three, the design build Aida County Jail Temporary Kitchen Complex. And, uh, we received one proposal for this project. Uh, Robin has our bonfire procurement system all queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
I'm ready.
All righty. So just a little bit about this project. Uh, the intent of this request for proposal is to obtain proposals from qualified contractors for providing design services, permitting, and to construct, furnish, equip, install, and lease a fully functional temporary modular kitchen complex at the Aida County Jail for use during the remodel of the jail's existing kitchen. So we have, uh, the, uh, sole bidder, or sole proposer up there, and they are Cotton Logistics. And, uh, we will need a little time to review their proposal, and, uh, we'd like to, uh, request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? I'll accept the motion to table the, uh, the, the review till the eighteenth of February.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, table RFP, RFP two five zero one three for final rankings and, uh, re, uh, award review until the February eighteenth meeting.
Dale, second the motion. That give you enough time?
I think so.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Carries, thank you. We have another bid to open.
Yes, uh, we have the opening of, uh, bid two five zero two three, the rebid of the Aida County Coroner's Office Imaging Room Remodel, FY twenty-five. And we received ten responses for, uh, the rebid. Yeah. And, uh, Robin has our bonfire procurement system all queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
I'm ready.
All right. So, uh, we'll have a spreadsheet that'll be opening up here soon. Um, we'll be looking at the name of the bidder today and the total bid amount, which will include the base bid plus a twenty thousand dollar owner's contingency.
Is that that catskin thing?
Oh, yes, yeah.
That's what that is, isn't it?
Yep. So, uh, this is the rebid of that project. Interestingly, uh, the first, uh, time we went out for bids for this, we received ten per, uh, bids as well, so it's good to see that we, uh, got the same amount the second go around. All right, there's our bids up on the screen. Uh, our first bidder is, uh, Adam Rowe Painting. And, uh, they have a total bid amount of three thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars. And, uh, you may note that that's gonna be really low comparatively to the rest of the folks. I think they're probably a subcontractor that probably put in a bid, but we'll, uh, look at that bid a little closer. Our second bidder is Alpine Construction Management with a total bid amount of a hundred eighty-nine thousand, uh, two hundred and ten dollars. Third bidder is Barrier Building, uh, with a total bid amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, bidder number four is Bill Corporation with a total bid amount of a hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, bidder number five is E K C Incorporated with a total bid amount of two hundred six thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars. Uh, bidder number six is Excelsior Construction with a total bid amount of a hundred ninety thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, bidder number seven is Gafford Construction Incorporated with a total bid amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand. Uh, bidder number eight is Pacific Construction with a bid amount of a hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, bidder number nine is Prusik Construction LLC with a total bid amount of two hundred forty-eight thousand dollars even. And, uh, bidder number, uh, ten is, uh, Wright Brothers Building Company with a total bid amount of a hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. So those are our ten bidders, and, uh, we will need a little time to review their bids, and we would like to request that this be tabled for award recommendation to the, uh, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay. Is that one just for a portion of the, of the project, it sounds like?
I think they're a painting contractor, and so I think they're maybe bidding another, uh, sub on.
Just.
Just a painting portion, so. But, uh, we'll, we'll review their bidding. Get back with you on the eleventh.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we, uh, uh, table award, uh, ta- table bid number twenty-five zero two three uh, to the February eleventh, uh, business meeting for final rankings and award recognition.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries, thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. All right, we have some alcohol licensing catering permits. Um, uh, we have one, uh, negative assessment from the sheriff's office on one of the licenses. Uh, I'll accept a motion on catering permit. We'll take up the license separately.
I move that we approve the three catering permits as listed on the agenda, and offer the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have two, two new licenses. One, uh, McNab's Vape and Delivery, and they have a negative review from the, from the sheriff's office because of some outstanding fines that have not been paid, and our ordinance, uh, precludes us from even, uh, uh, authorizing a license when, when there's outstanding, uh, fines and fees that haven't been paid. Is there any other discussion on it?
No, just to, just to reiterate, Mr. Chairman, I, I've read this application as well and looked at the ordinance. Uh, and it's, it's very specific.
Yep. I'll accept the motion.
So I move that we deny the, uh, application for McNab Vape and Delivery, twenty-one sixty-four S South Broadway Avenue. Uh, deny that application for a license.
Okay, I'll second the motion, and, uh, if, if you'll pass along what they, what they need to pay the fines.
Correct, either that or the, the other option would be to remove themselves from the business through those individuals with the outstanding fines, uh, seeing as how they are significant amounts.
Oh, yeah.
Um, they would have to remove themselves from the business, and then they can reapply with someone who is outside of-
All right, good enough.
Issues.
And, and they, they will or have been notified about that, correct? About that option?
They have spoken with Spencer. I have not been involved in those particular conversations. They were notified of that. They had submitted a previous application with a different applicant, um, the first time, and that applicant had a, a good amount of fines, um, which is when they then submitted a second application with a different applicant who has even more fines. Oh, um, they have been very nice to work with, um-
Well, and our ordinance is very clear.
Correct, and they were a little confused because they, um, have a business running in Canyon County and seeing people, and so they were a little confused. So we did explain, or at least my understanding is we explained clearly the difference in the county ordinances.
Well, that's the difference in Canyon County must not have that, that, uh, all right.
Yeah, that, I guess that's my meaning, that they, that they clearly understand what the situation is and why they deny, and then what they need to do about it.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And I guess these are very old blocks, too. They haven't been outstanding for a number of years. And they need to get paid in order to get a alcohol license from Aida County. That's in our ordinance, and we haven't proposed changing the ordinance. Okay. Uh, so you made a motion, did I second the motion? I forget, okay, I second the motion. Okay, any other discussion? Uh, all in favor say, all right, aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have, uh, Malahouse. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the license for the Malahouse, three oh two seven North Coal Road, uh, as listed on the agenda.
Second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have clerk's office. We have Deputy Clerk here with us.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll keep it brief today. As you know, Trent is meeting with elected officials and department heads this week regarding budget. Um, and then we have our kickoff, official kickoff on Friday downstairs in the public hearing room. I believe that's at ten AM. So we're looking forward to that, and we're getting right back into it. Sometimes it feels like it never ends.
Well, it doesn't. Thank goodness it doesn't.
Yeah. He'll be busy doing that all week.
Yeah. Every time a trip around the sun starts.
Right.
All right. Anything else? No elections are any coming up, or?
We're keeping an eye on some things we're seeing at the legislature, but-
Have they been digging, digging, uh, taking out the, the, uh, backos and, and, and the, and tearing up concrete out of the elections office in Benjamin?
Yes, if you visited elections right now, you would be amazed at how different it looks, but they're moving right along, and it's gonna be, we're really excited about it. and it's gonna be, we're really excited about it. It's gonna be a very nice facility, so.
Well, great, great, okay.
They're they're on schedule and ready to?
Yep, things are going well.
Okay, all right, now we've got the clerk's office. That's you and we have claims journal. I'll take a motion on claims journal.
Mr. Chairman, I just those previous catering motions, I don't think I needed in the motion to authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board, so. If that if that wasn't.
If you wanna amend your motion, that's fine.
If that wasn't in the motion, I made my motion, so.
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Now I can clearly sign the documents. Okay, now we move to the claims journal. I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
And I move to authorize the page.
The claims of the claims journal dated January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Now we have the treasurer's office. She's got a bunch of stuff down here. You wanna tell us a little bit about it?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly. Before you for consideration are tax cancellations on some delinquent person, real personal property parcels. Now I will note, these are true cancellations, not not mere adjustments. They're cancellations for just the years listed on the agenda.
Right.
And we present these to you only after we have exhausted significant collection efforts. I will note that the parcels here are for tax years, or the links these are for tax years twenty, twenty, twenty seventeen through nineteen. Um, so all of these are more than five years old. All of these parcels are inactive um, in the assessor's property records, which means that the properties can no longer be located for uh, appraisal purposes. Um, so what we have done in the treasurer's office is we have sent all these parcels over the years, multiple delinquent notices, demand letters, we followed up with phone calls. When red mail is returned to us, we further research a mailing address. So again, we have exhausted significant efforts to locate these taxpayers to collect on them. Uh, in the case of the M parcels, um, those are manufactured homes, those have been demolished. And then the O and P parcels, those are for um, businesses and the records of the Secretary of State show those businesses have been closed. So at this point, these have been on the books for more than five years and we are unable to locate them for collection purposes. Um, you'll recall our collection rate is over ninety-nine percent, so it's very rare situations that we bring these to you.
And there's nothing to have a have a tax deed say along.
Correct.
Right?
Right, or a warrant of disright. That's also an option for personal property, but there's nothing for the sheriff to seize and sell for collection.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, as well, the the amounts aren't listed on on the agenda, but these are minor amounts like nineteen dollars with uh, with penalties and interest, so I mean, even even if we had a demolished mobile home. So these are things that you've done, do your due diligence to try to recover uh, everything we can and that's why we're.
That's why we're here.
There's nothing to recover against.
Exactly.
Business has been closed or something.
Correct.
All right, I'll accept the motion on the uh, true tax cancellation.
Uh, I move to uh, I move to approve the personal property tax cancellations requested as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have the approval of the minutes for two meetings. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda.
Okay, um, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Now I have a couple of events at Expo Idaho. Um, an obedience rally, that'd be nice, and scratch for schools. I'll accept the uh, 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 motion.
I move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Now we have seven agreements. Um, one has already been signed and we just need ratification of it and the other are are new agreements, is or renewals. Any question or discussion on the uh, agreements?
Uh, just a couple of them just for interest, the Idaho State University, the training film that we're doing. Uh, we are, again, just to reiterate, we're working with the uh, uh, a lot of people here. Some of these have things talk about how we're working with other people in terms of uh, record keeping, communications and ISU and some other thing, and coroner's office with ISU. Anyway, these are just uh, we cooperate with other people and these are, we have to have agreements to do that.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
You have to modify that motion a little bit.
Uh, okay, that.
Ratify it. All right, we're ratifying agreement number one, but it's already been signed.
That's true. Okay, so I would change my motion. I move to uh, approve agreement number three zero three five one as identified on the agenda. Uh, and.
It's already been signed.
Cause it's already been signed and approve the remaining agreements listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And is that okay? Okay, I'll second the motion. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have uh, weekly indigent items. I'll accept the motion on weekly indigent items.
I move to approve the indigent items uh, as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Is there any business that needs to be brought up before the board? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Well, good morning. Uh, today is the uh, fourth day of February. The time is nine thirty-five. Uh, the board is in session acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District. Mr. Daly and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Uh, we also have with us for the record.
Job like paramedics.
I'm in front of the prosecutor's office.
And we have IT guy, substitute IT guy. Okay, um, clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda. Okay, first item on the agenda is the claims journal. Uh, for January thirty-first, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the EMS claims as listed on the claims journal dated January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We also have, uh, motion carries. We have uh, personnel actions. Uh, two automated grade step uh, progression and one internal recruitment. Any any questions on that? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the EMS personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Now you have the approval of the minutes of our, uh, the Emergency Medical Services District from one twenty-seven twenty-five.
I move to approve the minute EMS uh, minutes as listed on the agenda for one, oh, one twenty-seven twenty-five.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have now two agreements. Uh, attendance agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Service District and Cody Snodgrass for Idaho State University's Paramedic Program. Any questions or discussion on that agreement or the other agreement? Two attendance agreements.
Again, I I, just to reiterate, this is another example of us working with ISU and their facility there. It's helpful to us and helpful to them, so.
Good. I'll accept the motion.
Do we have to have independent motions or can we do them together?
We can do them together.
I move that we approve agreement number three zero three one seven and agreement, EMS agreement three zero three one seven and EMS agreement three zero three one eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Now I have an EMS update.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, I only have one thing for you. As you both know, uh, GMT, the state plan amendment was uh, approved. Uh, and that is now back in our court to evaluate costs. That's a a big part of what uh, what the next step in this uh, process is. It's also in flux in a number of other states, but but for us, we just have to figure out the cost basis for what that payment looks like and that is work that's in process now.
Okay.
It's all I have for you.
That's great, and that goes, we're directed back to twenty twenty-three, correct?
Correct, beginning of twenty twenty-three. That's right.
All right.
That'll help.
Now, we had a bridge closer this week and and are we getting traffic or clearly?
Uh, curiously, I worked that district for many years and it uh, it'll be a hassle for sure, but uh, still there's a direct route to hospitals, so our our folks can figure it out. Uh, as as far as routing software, how long it takes for that to to recalculate routes? Um, I'm not sure. I'm, I assume that that would be um, almost immediate.
Yeah, well, that is the reason, one of the reasons that we have, we have asked the highway district every year for the last four years to put the replacement of the Echo Bridge on top of the uh, schedule and they they were forced to do it because of the study that they had their.
The bridge was falling apart and wouldn't sustain over six thousand pounds.
That, that seems like a problem.
That's a problem, so.
Mr. Chairman, and just to reiterate what you said or amplify what you said, and we asked for a study of that as well.
Say?
They they realized what we were saying. I I, we're we're not saying I told you so, but.
Oh, I told you so. It sounds a lot like I told you so.
Yeah, clear. All right, anything else for us?
That's it.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody adjourned. We're adjourned.